And here each of you has a choose from the other two. Uh, this is the candidate on candidate. Each candidate, okay, so each candidate just has one question or two to answer. And you have one answer. You have your answer. Oh, sure. And then we'll take, uh, let's take them first. Alright, so this is candidate on candidate. And, um, John already had a question, he's trying to restate the question. And, um, and we'll have an opportunity for him to answer in this round. So John will ask first, uh, then Brenda will ask one of the two gentlemen on either side. And then Andy will ask either the lady or the gentleman. And then we'll move to the other ticket.
To bring delivery state, we talked about the Addison, the Camelot landfill and the citizens that live close to that landfill. As I understand it, after Mayor Folsen delivered to Carrollton, that the city council, uh, the city council of Carrollton voted into rezone from industrial to a high-density residential in site O, which is immediately adjacent to the landfill. And I also understand that this really was on the council, and so I would like to get his, uh, understanding of, of why he voted for that.
Thank you, John, that's a great question. It also admits that I have some training experience and expertise. Because I was on city council, I believe, I'm not sure. But I do remember telling citizens in Carrollton, listen, don't buy a home there, don't buy a home there. Why? Because that wind will go from the west to the east. And when that happens, that property you bought, I mean, you're gonna get out as soon as you can. They've been listening. And nothing I can do as a council member to tell people, don't do that, you know, only one vote. And so they wanted that property residential, and that's what we did. It's the same thing with the property, the other issue involving Canal. We've got an issue here, another problem about, uh, Thomas Branch Creek. I was also working in Carrollton, we have a problem like that too, and therefore we'll be able to answer one, and Thomas Branch also when the time comes.
Okay, my question is for John. Um, I just want him to report to the audience, his view on the creek issue since he lives on the creek, and he's very involved in that. So I just would like for you all to have the opportunity to hear from his, his perspective on the creek issue.
One minute's not a lot of time to, but I'll, and I'll also wanna say that Mike Baumgartner also lives on Thomas Branch. And, and so, as I understand the issue, in 2009, there was, the Addison put in a permit for return in to dam up the Farmers Branch Creek. And it, and, uh, it was not challenged by the city of Farmers Branch, it actually went through their challenge to it, and it went through. Uh, that damming of the, of the creek, uh, the water was impounded for three years. And, uh, they were supposed to drill to the Trinity Aquifer, they only drilled to the Woodbine, which is higher and lower quality water. All we've been trying to do as a citizens group in working with, uh, the city, is to challenge Addison to meet the terms of his permit and to sustain the water flow back to the way it used to be. I actually spoke to, there was a meeting on the 30th, which I was, I was not at, but I understand that we're getting closer to the point where Addison is going to be fined for their, uh, violation of the permit. And, uh, I'm very hopeful that if they do drill to the Trinity, put the clean water in, and allow the water to flow again, that can restore the ecology of the creek.
No, Matt? What, what's that? No, um, I don't, I don't have any questions, but I can comment on that. I'm, 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 you ask a question, so you get to ask a question. I don't have a question. The people are fine. Okay, that's fine. Oh, you'll have a chance to be closed here. Like, yeah, I don't think you can ask yourself a question. Um, well, I never thought that. Um, if you have, I have a few questions here from the audience, if you have anything, we can send them out. Oh yeah, I'm just momentarily interrupting. Um, if you have, uh, three or five, that's coming in two minutes. Here's Mike.
So, we have, uh, a number of issues, you know, challenges in the city. Some are, there's conflict in it, uh, and I'm sure you have some new ideas. What is one difficult issue or opportunity that you would be willing to take a leadership role and fight for? Well, I think you, you hit the nail on the head, there are a number of issues in front of us. And so, one that I would take a leadership role, uh, of the many that I would certainly address as a city councilperson, is the vision aspect of where we want Farmers Branch to be, both now, in the next few years, and in the long term. So, I think, uh, ideas, the experience that I have, planning and zoning, understanding those comprehensive plans as they are laid out, west, east, the central, that's where I would focus my energies amongst, again, all the other issues that are going on in the city. I get to turn around and ask a question of you? Based on your experience in the water issue with Addison, can you explain your negative feeling, or any negative feeling that you may have arrived at, based with, on your experiences with the city?
So, I, I think, most everybody who's informed on the issue know that the city mismanaged it from the beginning. That, uh, there was never an evaluation done on the permit that Addison was going to file for. There was never an effort made to, uh, once the permit was filed, to ensure that they were gonna fulfill the permit. There was never an effort to confirm that the permit would completely, uh, replace all the water. By law, they have to replace all the water that's evaporated from the extra surface area and the water features. And, uh, and through that, it's how I got involved, you know, initially. But what happened with my involvement is, I met all the council members, I met the mayor, and the candidates for mayor. I started meeting people among the creek. And it's, it's been the most exciting part about the whole election process. Getting out and meeting people, and hearing their ideas, hearing their, their challenges, it's, it's very energizing. And, uh, it's been the best part.
This is French Water for Farmers Branch Creek. The black tree reefer folks released it just on our request. And we're waiting for the third and fourth cups to be released. Uh, that's humorous, I hope you understand. Okay, we've done that, all are, all are remaining seated, no one kept the gloves. So now we have, uh, audience interaction. We had some came in, uh, earlier as well. Here's one that came in earlier. It's a little long. Several homeowners in the new Cambridge Arms development asked city staff to investigate feasibility of constructing a dome over certain neighborhoods within the city, including theirs. The dome would protect events, goal climate change and environmental pollutants, as well as reduce crime. This would be funded through a tax increment financing scheme. A neighborhood that voted eighty percent of the property owners to be included would be part of this plan. Would you vote to fund a feasibility study for neighborhood dome construction? Remember I asked, uh, me to pick out the April Fool's question? I have visions of this dome. Imagine trying to eighty percent, but your neighbors disagree on it. Alright, now we're, oh, we have audience questions. Ah. Alright. They're all more for district three, so let's start with district three, and there are more doing. And I'm gonna, I'm gonna kinda squash some of these together. Um, I guess this is for district three, Candace, and then just for Brenda. The heart of the question is, what can you, or can Farmers Branch, and what can you do to have a most effective campaign to attract vibrant new businesses and a younger crowd to our city? So I guess we'll have that for all, three, district three. What can you, or what can the city do, and how could you lead, what, what effort could you lead to attract a new vibrant business and a younger crowd to the city?
To attract vibrant businesses, I could work with John Land and the economic department directly, I encourage during the days. So, I could work with them, I already, George and I both went on tour of the west side and the east side. John and the husband Allison took us on this tour, west side, east side, all the way through Farmers Branch. I think I could work with them, when they have, or if anybody in the community has business owners that are coming in, I would be happy to meet with them, happy to work with any, any prospect coming in here. That's what I could do to attract vibrant businesses, as far as a younger crowd. What I've heard out there is restaurants. Bring in the, and of course, the neighborhoods, they want nice housing that would work with them. But what they're looking for is a nice restaurant like Salt Press. Bring in the nice restaurants, bring in the trails, bring in the green space, that's what the younger crowd likes.
Basically, what, what can the city do, and how can you help lead the city toward attracting younger, uh, younger people and, uh, vibrant business?
Well, basically, I'm a business person, and I have my office, I've had it with my community here, in the Carrollton-Farmers Branch area. So, I work a lot of business, all the time, I handle small businesses, basically. And, so, I'm also a member of the Farmers Branch Chamber of Commerce. So, I know they're looking for location, uh, freeways and so forth, uh, that's a good deal, so I can do that as an individual. Unfortunately, you know, there's a fifty mile rule as far as restaurants, which means that if you have a restaurant and Farmers Branch, well, let's say Addison, you're not gonna get one of Farmers Branch at the same time, through fifty miles in the radius. Do is do the same thing. So what happens is that Farmers Branch has a difficult time getting these businesses, but we can still do that. Now, as far as you residents, I'm a resident, my son's back there, the thirty-year crowd, I mean, they don't like what we older ones want. They want, you know, the park, they want, uh, nice restaurants in it, they want, uh, apartments, they go up and down and be mobile. When the joy of night of people debate, don't have kids, I'm sorry, anyway, I'll talk about it later, thank you.
I think there's so much we can do in Farmers Branch, and in the limited time, I'm only gonna talk about one thing, is that in Mercer Crossing, there is such an opportunity to attract younger families and to put in restaurants that people would, would, uh, drive to and be able to, to, uh, to use. I'm like everybody else, my family, when we were saying, well, what are we gonna have for dinner tonight? Let's go out, let's go get something, go to Addison, go to Los Angeles, and drive right by Mercer Crossing. And yet, we're doing nothing with that land, except that I understand it's bigger than between two developers. And so, the city can encourage and, and, and structure a conference where we could have multi-developers come in and compete for our business. So, and come in with the best ideas of what, how we could develop there. And then we, you know, we could also, I talked earlier about getting citizens involved in reviewing these kinds of plans, and, and, uh, what people really want. What younger kids want is, they want live, eat, work, play, they wanna live, eat, work, and play in the same place. And, and we can do that in Mercer Crossing. And I'm really excited about the opportunity.
Great. Now for district five. Relating to redevelopment, but a different aspect, we have lots of fifty-year-old commercial buildings, is a problem. Uh, what can, uh, what can or should be done about it by the city? So that's commercial. Go ahead.
Well, there's two areas, I think, talking about older, uh, commercial buildings, there's the area down by, uh, the Paul Road and kind of the Barapaho, six thirty-five. And, uh, the way I have to do is look across the freeway to the Galleria, go from high end to, uh, to low end. And in the same way, we need to do, to be intentional about the residential plan, we, we need a, an intentional commercial plan to try to go in, and we're gonna be more successful, that location's awesome, the value of the land is tremendous. We, we need to have, uh, a big vision there. I think the other place is right there along, uh, Garden Brook, uh, behind Beltline, the street behind Beltline. And, and in the same way, when you cross Beltline, when you cross Marsh Lane from Addison and Farmers Branch, you see, you know you're in a different town. And, uh, and, and I think the, the development of those buildings needs to be more like, uh, in Garden Brook, you know, there's an opportunity, I think, to make it more like Beltway, with some restaurants and hotels.
Old commercial buildings, a problem or a failure?
Certainly it's a challenge, uh, a problem, I'm not sure that's the right term, but it is a challenge. And I think, just like we've talked about this evening, redevelopment is an important aspect of that. So, it's understanding what commercial properties are out there, and where they are in their life cycle of business. If an older commercial building is occupied by a proper business that is doing good work, and, you know, a lot of good viable businesses, or I should say, uh, we need to work with them, and we need to improve their building. However, there are other opportunities where the building may be empty or vacant, where we can work with that property owner and look for other opportunities. If we wanna attract, is the question to the other district, of vibrant businesses, maybe we look toward incubator space, where, uh, developers and, uh, business entrepreneurs can come in and use space at a, a low cost for them. And that would attract that younger set of people.
Uh, back, Mr. Creed, a fairly pointed question for Andy. Uh, and this is on two cards. One is, uh, the qualifications being one-year residency in the city. And a second relates to an agreement to not put up signs till after the season. You can come in or, okay.
Number one, that's, I think, correct. Um, if you look at my board and record, it's 2011. When I left before, I lived over by the Galleria. When I moved into the district, it's been about a year and a half, I'm Farmer's Branch length. That, you can look at that off the record. But again, I've been in this area from nineteen eighty-eight. So that's, I don't know, do you have any questions I can throw at you?
I just, I just.
Um, I'm just saying, if anybody has a question, Andy, you can look at the record and see the votes. Now, the thing about, the second thing about, um, oh yeah, this is interesting thing. During the, um, I think, when we were taking, picking, I guess, taking losses, I did one, two, three, and we found that we had three. Uh, I think the issues came out after, what anybody knows you, that was the campaign. The one, last, was the president, last three, and the other two individuals, and then I picked Andy. And, at the other form, somebody asked me about it, they were really upset about that. And I was saying, what is this gonna make? I mean, what is this gonna make? My question, my answer then is that, if you're gonna wait until after the season to start advertising, that's your problem, you're proactive. I can't do that, I'm serious, I'm running for office, and you need to know what's going on. I mean, I've missed in myself, I've seen my, my science, that's what I'm gonna do, I'll do the best I can, thank you.
Alright, we're at the point where it's time for our closing. Um, we've got most of the audience questions answered, or at least that asked. My closing statement, the candidate has two minutes. And, um, we'll go in turns. And Matt, who's first?
Andy's first.
Who? Andy's first, alright. Two-minute closing statement. Two minutes, yeah, okay.
Um, thank you very much, my name's Andy Alico. And, I'm running for council because I feel like I can do the best job for you and for the city of Farmers Branch. I like Farmers Branch, I find it a tremendous community, my wife and I live here, and across the street in Carrollton. And, because we wanna be here. You know, I have nothing against, I have two opponents, John and Brenda, but God, but God bless them and their families, great. But that's not good enough, but you need somebody who knows about loopholes, you know, city, police, budgets, and so forth. We should have all of them, having Farmers Branch, or that's why we have to remember districts. You know, I think this thing's out of my control. I mean, the good thing about me is my background. And some of you might think that's wrong, because somebody said on their year, I've been here, and maybe I've served in city council in Carrollton. I think it's really unactive, it means that I don't, I know where the bathroom is in city council. And the only person that is just an individual sheriff, that's last two years, I've been to every meeting of city council, every meeting except city council. Now, I missed one, other than my wife, but it's gold. And I couldn't, had to go to the desk, otherwise I'd be in trouble. I've been married forty-four years, I know when I have to do something. So, anyway, so, I mean, I look at my record, some stuff is back here, do you have any questions? I'd be glad to answer those, I'll be here. I was hoping that you could hear more about us, and meet me and so forth, because I met most of you. But, I mean, I just wanna do the best I can for my community, I like Farmers Branch, my wife and I like it here. And I would hope that you would study this openly, and it decides it does for you and Farmers Branch. I ask for your trust, and I ask for your vote, thank you.
My name is Brenda Robert, running for district three. I ran for city council in 2010, almost made it, but during that, or after that time, until this time, I've been very heavily involved in the city. Um, I do also go to every city council meeting, except when I'm out of town. I go to every study, study session, so I stay on top of what's going on in the city. I too love Farmers Branch, I've been here twenty years, um, it's home to us, I'm children raised here. So, we just, I see, you know, um, younger people, younger families coming in, I see how we can do that. I see how we can make the city vibrant and growing and productive. I believe that we can get up to a hundred percent occupancy in our vacant buildings. And I can have a vision for Mercer Crossing. I also, you know, believe that we need senior citizen accommodations, we need to continue to develop and beautify the four corners, which is coming along nicely. I would like to see a nice hotel on Bellview and I-35, and that northeast block. And I wanna keep your taxes low, and keep the taxes low, because that is an attractant to businesses coming into Farmers Branch. Appreciate all of you coming out tonight, thank you, Branch Forum for hosting this, thank you.
Thanks for everybody coming tonight, uh, it's always a great opportunity to, to meet with people and to be able to express different views. And, and all, thanks for the Branch Forum hosting this. I really do think that the questions were, were fair, and they were not, uh, they were complex. And they did draw the differences between the candidates that you see running for you in district three. So, you know, I'm John Norwood, I'm running for, for district three, because I'm, I've got a long record of service. I've served in, in the United States Army, I've been at the most senior levels of, of the army, and managed big programs, and in both construction and in, and in, uh, program management, in delivering products and that whole, and getting things done. I did the same thing in, in industry, and now I'm in academia. So I've got a long record of success at the senior levels in, in, in those fields. And I have a, so I have a skillset that I am willing to give back to, to Farmers Branch. I think that the choice is clear, uh, on, on your choices. Do you want someone who stands for and keeps their word, that makes agreements and keeps their word, then you go, then I, I think I deserve your vote in this. The, the sign issue is certainly one where we made an agreement as candidates, and one of us violated it. So, I'll leave that to you, you to decide. But I have, uh, always given back, I've always served, I have the heart of a servant, I'm involved in the community, I attend the Farmers Branch, uh, Church of Christ. And, uh, and I think that if, uh, I can bring a fresh perspective to the city, that, um, maybe some, some new ideas. If you want the same thing that you've got, you know, then keep doing the same things over and over again. I have a vision that where I can bring development in the Mercer's Crossing, I can help with the redevelopment of, of our, our aging infrastructure. And I request that, request your vote, and that you, you give me your, uh, your confidence, and I can assure you, I will never violate your trust.
So first, one, uh, important thing about me that I think is worthy of noting is, I, uh, had the vision over the past years in my business to negotiate an exit strategy, and this year, I have a deal with my younger partners who buy me out to work seventy-five percent of the time, next year fifty percent, and the following year twenty-five percent. So I have a, I have an enormous amount of time to invest in this, everything I've ever done my whole life, I've jumped in with both feet, I've worked hard, and, and I've led. And, uh, I've been a manager, uh, you know, I led a company from, we started with two people, uh, we expanded all the way. We have people, we have a lady on the, on the east coast, and we have a couple of people on the west coast. Uh, we, we're virtually nationwide in our, in our coverage model. We, uh, uh, you know, payroll, budgets, profit sharing, health insurance, all of those things are managed by me. We also manage an office building, uh, we own an office, the office building we're in, and, and I'm the one that manages that, I do the leases, I negotiate with the people coming in. You know, you know, I'm, I'm a good manager, but I don't think that's what the city council needs. I think they need a leader, and, and, and I'd like to differentiate between that, and that is, is there are hard things that are gonna have to be done. And, and I've always been the kind of person who's not afraid to take on a hard challenge, to step up, and to say, you, you know, we have to change the culture, you know, we have a divided community, we don't have unity. Somebody needs to stand in the middle and pull the, the various sides together. I started that in my campaign, you know, I, you know, and, you know, I've met with some of the people in here, and, you know, but I've also, you know, I'm talking to all sides, we have to listen, and quite honestly, when we listen and talk together, you know, we, there's a lot that everyone agrees on. Thank you for your time, thank you.
I'll again echo the comments of thanking the Branch Forum for their forum this evening. Um, the reason I'm running for council is that I believe the experience that I have, uh, participating in the city, will allow me to do the things that we've been talking about this evening. About the vision, working with developers, working with the residency, on the challenges that we have in front of us. that we have in front of us. I've led the Planning and Zoning Commission, as I said, for seven years. I've also led large scale projects with Phil Reserve. My wife tells me that I tend to get the projects that nobody wants, and so, my senior management sends those projects to me, and I end up taking those and making sure that they're delivered. So I wanna make sure that those skill sets that I have benefit the city, and I want to work with council, residents, developers, to attract new folks, bring new businesses in, support the businesses that we have, and not forget those as well. And make sure that we have a lasting impression in the North Texas area of a city that's vibrant and has great amenities. Our location's never gonna change, obviously, but we need to make sure that we are a healthy city, with a healthy way of being physical, physically responsible for our monies that we bring in. So I'd ask for your vote or support District Five, and I'm happy to meet with any of you, all of you for that particular position. So again, thank you so much for your time this evening, coming out and participating in this event.
How about a hand for Farmers Branch? I was thinking personally, it's just, I really do feel proud of the Farmers Branch and to have good candidates to choose from. It's fabulous. Now, you've heard a lot more than most people in the city now. You've had a lot more time with these candidates than virtually anyone else. There're gonna be a lot of voters who haven't heard what you heard. It's part of your job to tell people in your neighborhood what you've heard, be fair, convey the messages, don't tell them who to vote for, but tell them what you heard and what your thoughts are. Spread the word among your neighbors. If you live in one district and you know people in the other, tell them what you know, and importantly, tell them to get out votes. Have a contact candidates if they have questions. There will be confusion about the district and the fact that, uh, here at Farmers Branch, people on the ballot from Dallas County votes dot org. Everyone who's a registered voter will find their own sample ballot, and really, I encourage you and those you talk to, go there, look at your own sample ballot and make sure you've got someone to vote for, and if you do, make sure you vote. So on behalf of Branch Forum, thank you very much for coming. It's not the most humorous activity that you could engage in, but I think it may be one of the most informative, and your vote is very important. Sign up at the back if you'd like to be on our mailing list. Do you remember the written question? I'm gonna hand it out to them, it'll be posted on branchforum.com sometime after five p.m. Friday. And we're on time, I think the candidates will probably be willing to.
Can I just say one more?
Be willing to stay a few minutes, talk if you want to. Yeah, Brenda?
For District Three, and it's real easy for on election day, if you live north of Bellingview, you vote at the website. If you live south of Bellingview, you vote at the website. So that's how it is divided for districts.
And always double check by going to that website. I've served as an election judge, a number of people that I've talked to were certain. Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.